Good evening. Thank you all so very much for coming out this evening. For those of you who don't know who I am, my name is Renee Flowers and I have the pleasure of serving as the Chair for the Pinellas County School Board along with some magnificent colleagues and staff. Before we go through our regular agenda, I wanted to make sure that we thanked the Mayor of Oldsmar, which is Doug Beavis, Mayor Doug Beavis, and we also have with us the Vice Mayor Eric Seidel. I'm not sure if any of the council members are here, Gabby McGee, Dan Soraki, and Gerald Beverland. I want the Mayor, if he would care to do so, to address us. And again, thank you so much for having us here in your City Hall today.
Thank you Chairman Flowers and welcome to our great cities. I gotta tell ya, if this is a council meeting, we'd be freaking out right now. I don't know what you had on the agenda, it's cause of this. I was telling Chairman Flowers, we normally sit up here and go... So really, I do want to thank you. Our Vice Mayor is here, Eric Seidel, and for those of you that have run an election, he is unopposed and so he will be the next Mayor of the City of Oldsmar in March. So those that have not run a campaign, that is a very nice feeling because I can't think of running. So again, thank you, since this is a school board meeting, I thought it only be appropriate that I quiz you a little bit, if that's okay? Did you study? By a show of hands, how many people know what Oldsmar is named after?
The car.
Our Vice Mayor, he better know. The Oldsmobile car, Ransommy Olds, the founder of the Oldsmobile founded this city. How many years ago does anybody know that? Our Vice Mayor. A hundred and one years ago, we just celebrated our centennial. So he had the vision to come down here and make a retirement community from the workers from Detroit and founded a great city, ten square miles. We're very proud of it. Our nighttime population is about fifteen thousand, our daytime population is about sixty thousand. So we're a big employment center right here in the City of Oldsmar. We're the home of Nielsen, the media research company that does all the ratings. So we're really proud of our great little city. And a couple of things that we're very proud of, especially with the youth in Pinellas County, in February we'll be hosting the USA Gator Nationals on our Olympic-style Supercross track where in 2016, we hosted many of the Olympians that went to Rio de Janeiro. As a matter of fact, the two people that won the gold medal here in Oldsmar went on to win the gold medal in Rio de Janeiro. So it's a pretty cool thing to have here in the city. And we recently partnered with the Tampa Bay Lightning and we will have a youth outdoor hockey facility for street hockey right here in the City of Oldsmar. Our kids are our pride and joy, both in our schools and in our community. We have a lot of mentors that go to the two elementary schools here in Oldsmar. And so it's very important for us to give back to the youth and help out our schools. And we've just approved through our City Council some funding to help out with some of the after-school programs. And so it's very important to us and as you know, board members, they're important to you guys too. So once again, thank you very much and have a great meeting and welcome to the City of Oldsmar.
Moving forward with our agenda, do we have any amendments to the agenda?
We have no amendments to the agenda, Madam Chair.
There being no amendments to the agenda, may I have a motion for adoption of the agenda? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We have our invocation today and we would like to thank Ms. Wright for finding for us Pastor Oliver King of Restoration Ministries of Largo, Florida. If we could stand for our invocation, that will be followed by our Pledge of Allegiance. Our National Anthem will also follow our pledge.
Amen, let us pray. The Heavenly Father, this evening we want to say thank you, Lord, for your grace, God, for your mercy shown towards us. Thank you for your guidance and your direction. God, you have protected and taken care of us and we say thank you. We ask now that you be in the midst of this school board meeting. Open up our hearts for unity and growth. Bless every official that makes up this great Pinellas County School Board. Bless the families and our government. And we will forever praise you for it and we thank you, Lord, again. Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there? Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Could you sing it for the second song?
My second song will be Journey to the Past from the musical Anastasia.
Heart, don't fail me now. Courage, don't desert me. Don't turn back now that we're here. People always say life is full of choices. No one ever mentions fear or how the world can seem so vast on this journey to the past. Somewhere down that road, I know someone's waiting. Years of dreams just can't be wrong. Arms will open wide, I'll feel safe and wanted, finally home where I belong. And starting now, I'm learning fast on this journey to the past. Home, love, family. There was once a time I must have had them too. Home, love, family. I will never be complete until I find you. One step at a time, one hope then another. Who knows where this road may go? Back to who I was, back to find my future, things my heart still needs to know. Yes, let this be a sign, let this road be mine. Let it lead me to my best and bring me home.
An absolutely awesome job by Alexis, going by Lexi Stevens. She's a student at Palm Harbor University High School. Thank you so much, you did a fantastic job. Pinellas County Schools works diligently to develop the whole student through a variety of electives and extracurricular activities in addition to core instruction. Our athletic department plays a crucial role in that work. More than 5,000 Pinellas County High School students are participating in a sport throughout the year. It's amazing to watch as they develop meaningful, supportive relationships with their teammates and coaches and use their athletic experiences to develop social emotional skills, to overcome challenges in their lives and as motivation to succeed both in sports and in life. Today, we are going to see the first in a new series entitled Grades and Grit, celebrating Pinellas County scholars, athletes. Let's watch as we meet Trey Gilliam, an outstanding junior basketball player from Gibbs High School, and that's not Trey.
I'm Demora Sliwski and welcome to Grades and Grit, the show that highlights the academic and athletic achievements of a Pinellas County School student. In this segment, we highlight Trey Gilliam, a junior basketball player at Gibbs High School. Trey, give us your forename.
I mean, my real government name is Frank, but I go by Trey because I'm the third. My grandfather's name is Frank, my dad's name was Frank, my name is Frank, so they call me Trey because I'm the third.
So, an outstanding basketball player, only a junior in here at Gibbs, how do you balance your academics with your athletics?
I was always taught that whatever you do, you have to do it a hundred percent and work hard at it. So I feel like it was easier to translate basketball academics because on the basketball court, I have to go a hundred and in the classroom, I have to go a hundred. So that's just my mindset and wherever I go, that's what I do. I feel like I can translate in any part of your life, that's what I do all the time.
So, what motivates you on the court?
I mean, the motivation comes from just being loving to do it and I just want to be the best at it.
What about in the classroom? What's that motivation for you?
The motivation for me is, I just wanna be the best that I can do in the classroom too. I mean, I'm always wanting to, all my, I look up to my older sister, she always got good grades, so I have to follow in her footsteps and try to be around something like that.
How does it feel to step into a leadership role considering you're an underclassman while you're leading the team, which includes seniors?
It was kind of nerve-wracking at first, but my coaches had faith in me and they told me I had it, so I felt like if they believed in me, I could believe in myself and just do that. And my coach works with us every day and he puts his time and effort into making us better and the least I can do is give him all my effort and if he needs me to lead the team, I can lead the team and do what I need to do. But I'm thankful for everything, I'm thankful for my teachers, my family, everybody that's behind me, everybody that believes in me. So if life is good, I can be, I can perform better than them.
So what does Trey want to be when he grows up?
I wanna go to school and major in business. I have a passion for film and music, so I'll go with basketball however far that takes me. Definitely will get me a scholarship, so have all basketball technique and I'll venture off into the business world. If I can bring in more coaches because of my grades, then that's something I feel like I should take the opportunity to do. And it's very important outside of sports too, because going to a school where the academics is just as well as the basketball and athletic program, then after basketball, I have something I look forward to, be able to help me and my family.
Grit can be defined as courage and resolve, strength of character. And as you can see, Trey Gilliam is an example of grit. Thank you for joining us, see you next time.
I saw Mr. Demora somewhere in here earlier, he's floating around, but that was an absolutely fabulous job and I will tell you, if anyone was at the... And if you were at the Gibbs-Lakewood Basketball Game this past Friday, where I was, you can truly see what they do in action. I was there and it was tough. Well, now have our introduction of professional and community organizations by Lisa M. Wolf, our Public Information Officer.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Dr. Grego and staff, it is my pleasure to introduce the following representatives of community and professional organizations. Representing the Pinellas Classroom Teachers Association, Mike Gandoffo. With the Pinellas Arts for a Complete Education Coalition, Kay Eaton. And members of the media in attendance this evening include Dirk Shad with the Tampa Bay Times, Mike Fuel with Fox 13, and Jeff Rosenfield with Suncoast News. Today, we will have a presentation from the Student Rights and Responsibilities Committee. Please welcome from Palm Harbor University High School, Mackenzie Burke and Megan Christopher.
Hi, my name's Mackenzie Burke, I'm a senior at Palm Harbor University High School. I am a member of the Avid program and I am the school's head Avid recruiter and I am also a member of NHS. And after high school, I aspire to graduate from the University of Florida's Med School and become a radiologist.
Hello, my name is Megan Christopher, I am a senior at Palm Harbor University High School. I currently participate in NHS, National Technical Honor Society, Avid, and the Center of Academics and Business Administration and Management. After high school, I am hoping to attend a four-year university and pursue a career in advertising and graphic design. In regards to our National Merit Scholars Program, Palm Harbor had more national merit semifinalists than any other school in Pinellas County, with a total of eight students qualifying.
Our sports accomplishments this year are Palm Harbor Lady Canes volleyball team attended regional finals. Our swim team did incredibly well last year with both boys and girls team reached the state finals, boys placing fifth and girls placing sixth. In particular, one female swimmer won a medal and eight swimmers placed individually. The wrestling team went to districts and placed as dual runner-up. As for the soccer team, both boys and girls went to regional championships last year. The boys' team won PCAC championships with both boys and girls soccer's our four-time back-to-back district championship. One of our seniors on the soccer team, Olivia Gonzalez, recently, just last week, broke the 26-year-long world record, not world record, a school record for most goals. And the boys' golf team went to states and excitingly, Palm Harbor just got a lacrosse team.
So at the Florida Future Business Leaders of America State Fall Leadership Conference, Palm Harbor placed third in the annual Battle of the Districts and one of our students placed third in the leadership competition. Sixty-eight students also placed at the Future Business Leaders of America District Conference and qualified to compete at the State Leadership Conference in Orlando in March.
Twenty biomedical students got the AP Project Lead the Way recognition, which is a national accomplishment honoring students who excel in STEM courses. This year, Hosa qualifies for nationals and will be attending the regional competition on Thursday.
The students of the Center of Academics for Business Administration and Management Program have earned 29 industry certifications during the first semester of this school year alone.
Currently, our academic team is rated second in the county and last year, the county academic team that made it to states was made up of 50% Palm Harbor students. Incredibly, Palm Harbor's robotics team last year made it to Worlds.
Our theater department has had a very successful year so far. At the District Thespian Festival, Palm Harbor University received 31 top-rated events. Our one-act play, The Laramie Project, was selected for states and two Critics' Choice Best in Shows were awarded. We also have received nominations from the Straz Center for Broadway Star of the Future for our performance in The Diary of Anne Frank.
This year, our band went to the national competition, Bands of America, as well as placing 13th in states.
An art teacher at our school, Mr. Hughes, received a Scholastic Educator Award for having 26 pieces submitted by his students placed in the Scholastic Art Competition. We had three students selected to be shown at the Salvador Dali Museum. Eight students were selected for the Word and Image Exhibit and 42 pieces won Scholastic Art Awards for Palm Harbor.
Our yearbook team won the All-American Pacemaker Award for Journalism, which is awarded by the National Scholastic Press Association, and we have received this award consecutively for the past 10 years. And our yearbook was nationally recognized as an All-American Hall of Fame Crown finalist.
And our school news program, Storm Watch TV, won first place at the Pinellas County Schools' Media Festival in advance to the state competition. Storm Watch TV also won first place for Best High School News Show at the Florida Jim Harbin Media Festival. Five video entries placed at the Pinellas County Schools Festival, which is a huge accomplishment considering our school has television broadcasting as an after-school program, not an elective course.
A hundred and sixty-seven members were inducted to our National Honor Society this year, which is now a total of 311 kids in the chapter. And this year alone, NHS has logged an estimated 4,000 hours. So Palm Harbor, my last four years there, I can genuinely say that this school has made me feel so prepared for college and the teachers are the most supportive teachers that I could ever speak of. I have nothing but good things to say about this school.
I'd have to agree. Palm Harbor, the teachers and staff have pushed us to strive to be our greatest selves and, I mean, at the end of this school year, I'll have eight AP courses done, which I would never think I would do. So I think the staff really pushed us to try our hardest. Thank you.
Fabulous, just another example of the wonderful things that are going on throughout our district. Moving on to our special order agenda, presentation of the Proclamation of National African American History Month, Dr. Grego.
Yes, Madam Chair and Board Members and to the audience, we are so happy and proud to present the proclamation recognizing and also celebrating National African American History Month, which we celebrate in February. So to do so, I'd like to call upon two individuals, Matthew Bloom, the nine-through-twelve Social Studies Specialist, and also Hillary Van Dyke, the Senior Professional Development Coordinator for Equity.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, School Board Members, Dr. Grego and staff. Pinellas County Schools celebrate the many achievements and contributions of local, state, and national African-American figures throughout the year, but particularly during the month of February, National African American History Month. This is a time to highlight the struggles, successes, and contributions of the African-American and Black communities in the United States, and the theme for African American History Month 2019 is Black Migrations.
As the theme, Black Migrations emphasizes the movement of people of African descent to new destinations and social realities. Beginning in the early decades of the 20th century, African-American migration patterns resulted in a more diverse and stratified interracial and interracial urban population amid a changing social atmosphere. According to the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History, such migrations resulted in the emergence of both Black and industrial workers and Black entrepreneurs, the growing number and variety of urban churches and new religions, new music forms, white backlash as in the Red Summer of 1919, and a blossoming of visual and literary arts.
Specific African-American history curriculum resources and professional development opportunities are provided by the Social Studies Team and the Equity Teams to all schools throughout the support or through the support of many community partnerships. Since 2015, the Commissioner of Education's African American History Task Force has recognized Pinellas County Schools as an exemplary school district for our work to maximize the integration of African-American history into our curriculum. To date, the approved exemplary status has only been awarded to 10 school districts in the state of Florida.
As we continue our efforts to enhance instruction and learning around African-American and Black history, we have added a series of two monthly newsletters that showcase unknown people and events in history and in science. The Unknown History Advocate primarily centers around the contributions of Black people in Florida, such as the courageous 12, Dr. Mary McLeod Bethune, and Harold A. Jackson Esquire. The Forgotten Superheroes of Science focuses on the contributions of scientists of color and scientists who are women or young people. For example, Barbara Ross Lee was the first Black woman to become a medical school dean.
Also throughout the year, teachers and other district staff have received increased support as they develop and implement more equitable instructional practices and resources related to African-American history.
This year, Michelle Anderson, K-8 Social Studies Specialist, and I created a course to help educators deepen their understanding of the racial history of South St. Petersburg. This course is titled Beaches, Bentsheds, and Boycotts and centers around an exhibit on loan from the Florida Holocaust Museum and primary source documents from the St. Pete Civil Rights Struggle. In addition to the PD, schools have been able to host the exhibit as such a multitude of students in St. Pete have seen the exhibit and been immersed in learning through the primary source documents of the era.
In partnership with EverFi, teachers and students have open access to the 306 African American History Digital Course that brings to life a number of important leaders and events whose impact changes the fabric of American life. During this month, our Principal's Multicultural Advisory Committee students take the lead at our schools and promote African-American history through informational posters set up in public spaces, cultural celebrations, morning announcements that highlight the successes and significance of contributions of African-Americans. Thank you.
We have a proclamation recognizing African American History Month. Do we have a motion with a second? Whereas during African American History Month, we celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by African-Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development. And whereas in 1915, Dr. Carter "Godwin" Woodson, noted Black scholar and son of former slaves, founded the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History. And whereas, Dr. Woodson initiated Black History Week, February 12, 1926. And for many years, the second week of February, chosen as to coincide with the birthdays of Frederick Douglass and Abraham Lincoln, was celebrated by African-Americans in the United States. And whereas, in 1976, as part of the nation's bicentennial Black History Week, was expanded and became established as African American History Month and is now celebrated across North America. And whereas, the observance of African American History Month calls our nation's attention to the continued need to battle racism and to build a society that lives up to its democratic ideals. 2019's theme, Black Migrations, celebrates and recognizes the stories of African-American and Black movements from spatial and social perspectives. Now therefore, we, the School Board of Pinellas County, Florida, do hereby proclaim February 2019 as African American History Month and urge all citizens to celebrate our very diverse heritage and culture and continue our efforts to create a world that is more just, more peaceful, and prosperous for all. Have a motion with a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion carries. And I will put in a shameless plug, please visit the Dr. Carter G. Woodson African American Museum in St. Petersburg, Florida. Terry Lipsin, Scott and the Board would love to have you come. Moving forward, we have the presentation of the Resolution Recognizing Student Services Week. Dr. Grego?
Thank you. February 4 through the 8th is a week that we should celebrate and also recognize as we should the entire year, our Student Services Department. And to present this resolution, I'd like to call upon Donna Cecilia, the Executive Director of Student Services.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Madam Chairman, School Board Members, Dr. Grego and staff. As you can see, I was eager to get up here too. This is my absolute favorite meeting of the year because I get to remind you and the public and everyone of the wonderful Student Services staff that we have in our school. So the state of Florida does set aside that first week in February for special recognition of all of our Student Service staff, which of course includes our counselors, our nurses, our school psychologists, our educational diagnosticians, our attendance specialists, our social workers, and all of the support staff that support them. It's just a true blessing to me to do this work and to come up here each year and talk about how this team supports the education, the behavioral supports, the academic supports, the health supports, making sure students attend school, that they're healthy, that they're available and able to learn. But this year, as I was reflecting on my comments, I thought about how a year ago, when I was up here saying this to you, it would just be a few short weeks after my presentation that the shooting took place at Marjory Stoneman Douglas in Parkland, Florida. And just, I think it is a great example of the heart of Student Services in that with Ms. Matt Way and Dr. Grego's approval, I had to... I had to restrain Student Service Staff, the number of staff that wanted to go down there. And we did, for three weeks. We sent a team, and they worked with those students, those families, and those staff. And I think that that is a great example of the staff that you have in your district that do this not only for our schools, our families, and our communities, but across the state and across the nation. Because when they are needed, they are there. And so tonight, we recognize them, and that's really what this proclamation is about. Thank you.
Fabulous. And we do have School Board Member Lisa Kane, who will read the resolution. Do we have a motion with a second?
A political subdivision of the state of Florida hereby recognizes the week of February 4 through 8 as Student Services Week. Whereas each and every school day, school counselors, nurses, social workers, and psychologists, whom we all call Student Service Professionals, work together to assist students in acquiring the knowledge, skills, and competencies to make well-rounded and healthy lifelong decisions. It is important to recognize that academic performance is impacted by developmental factors and school and community factors. Research demonstrates the value in providing supportive programs and services in order to increase student achievement. The services provided by Student Services personnel enable students to learn and the teachers to teach, and strengthens the bond between families and schools. Whereas, we acknowledge that Student Service Professionals have the necessary knowledge, skills, and abilities to reduce barriers to learning and assist classroom teachers, parents, and community agencies in providing a safe and positive learning environment for all children. Whereas, we acknowledge that the Student Service Professionals contribute to the educational success and personal development of all students. Whereas, we realize that Student Service Professionals provide services directly to teachers, parents, and the community. They also serve as a resource to school improvement teams to facilitate school improvement plans. Now therefore, be it resolved by the School Board of Pinellas County, Florida as follows. Section one, that the School Board of Pinellas County, Florida, on behalf of all students and personnel, does hereby resolve to recognize the week of February 4 through 8, 2019, as Student Services Week for Pinellas County Schools. And section two, that the School Board of Pinellas County recognizes and appreciates the significant contributions made by school counselors, nurses, social workers, and psychologists. Passed and adopted this 29th day of January 2019.
Thank you. We have a motion with a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. School Board Members, for the next two, we will go down.
For the next presentation, I'd like to call upon, again, Donna Sicilian. And as we're doing this and recognizing not only the Student Services Week, but also the Employee of the Year for our district. So Donna, thank you very much.
Sure. So this is our fifth year of actually taking advantage of Student Service Week and highlighting and choosing a Student Service Employee of the Year. And so the reason for this is we choose someone who really embodies what Student Services is about. And so this year, we have chosen Taryn Ecker. And Taryn is a school psychologist. She's been with the district for about, oh, I didn't write down, six years. She's been with the district for six years. She serves as an itinerant school psychologist. She was nominated by one of her schools, although both of her schools were absolutely thrilled when we announced that she would be the winner. She is a team leader within the School Psychology Department. She has exceptional skill and dedication to her students and her job, which makes her a great representative for Student Services. Her colleagues reported that, and I quote, "Taryn is far and away deserving of this award due to the unrelenting determination for student success, her innovating collaboration among staff, and the innate ability she possesses to push others, in a good way." Every week, with a smile on her face, Taryn comes to school, ready and willing to help any and all with the teaching of our youth. So Taryn Ecker really does embody all of the qualities that make Student Services staff such an important part of our team. And so we just want to congratulate you, Taryn, and thank you for representing all that Student Services does. Her principal's here, too. So come on up, Kim, and get in the picture now.
You can get in that picture, Kim, if you'd like.
Good. I'll need to be in there.
Congratulations. Board Members, the last two presentations have dealt with Student Services. I also want to recognize Ms. Lori Matway, who's the Associate Superintendent of Student Services, and thank her and Donna for both of your leadership skills in maneuvering all of those positions and serving our department. So thank you so much. Our final presentation is the presentation of the Energy Star Certification. And we'll call upon Clint Herick. He's in a different seat here, but he'll come up to the microphone. We're very proud of the energy conservation methods and systems that we've put in place. So, Mr. Herick?
Thank you, Dr. Greggo, Madam Chair, Board Members. It is with pleasure and pride that we come to you tonight with the Energy Star Certifications from Synergistic. About four years ago, we started our partnership with Synergistic, and I want to first commend you for both the courage and the faith that you had in us for implementing the program. At that time, if you go back, there were some people who didn't know that it could be successful. And this is one of those times that we get to come to you and share with you the success of the program. While we could point out many successes, probably recognition from the Energy Star Program is probably one of the greatest successes that we've had. It's become a true point of pride, not only with the district and our district staff, but with our schools and our school principals as well. I know that sometimes when you go and make those visits to your schools, you look and you see those Energy Star certifications and trophies still up there in the front office. I think the most impressive part about the Energy Star Program as a total is the incredible amount of research and science behind the program. And for us to get these certifications, it really does show that we're doing something right. And at this time, I'd like to bring up Michael Gaul, Senior Vice President with Synergistic, for a presentation and to also introduce his team to you.
Hi, thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Pinellas County School Board. I'd first like to thank Dr. Greggo and Chief Operating Officer Clint Herick for the really strong partnership that we've had from Synergistic. This has been a tremendous program. Pinellas County not only leads the state of Florida in Energy Star certifications at ninety-two schools, which is over seventy percent of your schools, it is also leading nationally within the top ten of number of facilities that are certified. We've been able to reduce energy use by over twenty-five percent. And we're now in our fourth year of the program, resulting in over twenty million dollars of cost avoidance on utility spend. None of this could happen without the tremendous support of the team that we have here locally. So if I could get them all to stand up here, and I'll introduce them. We have, starting from left to right, Ms. Erica Johnson, Mr. Chris Bobrovetsky, try and spell it, Ms. Cindy Bennett, Mr. Stan Miller, and Ms. Jennifer Cumberbatch. And missing today is Mr. Travis Mallot, who's away on vacation for the week. I also brought with me my trustee, I'm going to make him stand up, our measurement and verification Senior Vice President, Mr. James Newkirk. Erica, do you want to come forward with the plaque? Clint, do you want to come forward and get in a picture here with the plaque? Come on forward, everyone. One more with a check, I think.
That's just another wonderful example of what we're doing throughout Pinellas County Schools to make sure that we're being fiscally prudent with everything that we need to do with our dollars, with taxpayer dollars.
Okay.
We're going to move on now to public comments on agenda items. Individuals who wanted to speak under public comments need to make sure that they signed in. Does that end?
Board Members and Dr. Greggo, we have one speaker this evening for specific agenda items. Mark Clutho will speak to consent number six and consent number nine.
Mark Clutho, Largo, six. Oh, this is something here. Three million, three hundred and forty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars. And of course, HVAC. Yeah. And strategic direction, efficient, and effective use of resources. Oh my. Nine. You've, a completion for campus renovation. Shouldn't that be completion of campus renovations? I don't know when you'll ever get the language right. This one, though, is learning in a safe environment for your strategic direction. And then, you just get finished bragging about this Energy Star and how wonderful you are. It's a farce. You still have the imaging specular reflectors facing the ceiling. Energy Star, what a fraud. What a fraud. What did Winston Churchill say? "We shape our buildings thereafter, they shape us." And here's the headline. Melting of Greenland's Ice Is Accelerating Toward Tipping Point, Study Says. Finding That A Region Could Be A Major Contributor In Rising Seas In Two Decades. Well, there goes Osmar. Oh, what a shame. Yeah. It's something that you do this bragging. It is not the reality. Not even close. I'll have more to say about this one. Thank you.
We have no further speakers.
Thank you. Any unfinished business? No unfinished business? Moving forward with consent agenda, do I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Do we have any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to our non-consent. Request approval of memorandum of understanding with Florida Prepaid College Board. Dr. Greggo?
Yes, Madam Chair and Board Members, this is an item that we're excited about through the Florida Prepaid College Board approached us on. We went over it a little bit for the sake of the audience in our last workshop last Tuesday. But I may ask Beth Herrandine, who's the Director of Communications, to just review it.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, Dr. Greggo and staff. It's my pleasure to present tonight a proposed memorandum of understanding with Florida Prepaid College Board. Over the past thirty years, Florida Prepaid has sold over 1.8 million plans and helped more than 460,000 students attend college. They've reached out to districts across the state to share the message with families that saving for college is important and necessary. And they're asking districts across the state to promote their open enrollment period, which opens February 1st and goes through April. Florida Prepaid partnered with Miami Dade last year with a pilot program. This year, they have expanded the program. And the partnership now includes Brevard, Seminole, Duval, Miami Dade. And they're asking Pinellas County to participate as well. In the memorandum of understanding, Florida Prepaid is asking partner districts to promote open enrollment through a variety of channels that we normally use, such as social media, emails to principals and families, and links to program information on our website and our parent portal. Florida Prepaid will provide to the district a promotions toolkit to help us promote with graphics and such, promotional materials in multiple languages. And most importantly, they will provide one, two-year college scholarship valued at $8,000 that the district can award using our criteria. And we intend to award that to a graduating senior planning to pursue a teaching career, most specifically, a teaching career in Pinellas County. So we are working with the Pinellas Education Foundation to receive the applications and process those applications. And the good news is, there's no cost to the district. So thanks to Lori Matway and also the Education Foundation for helping with this effort. And she and I are here to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions? School Board Member Lynn T.
Yes, I think it's very important to note on this memorandum that by entering college of education with the intent of becoming a teacher in Pinellas County, we are really in need of teachers here in Pinellas County. And I think with this $8,000 grant valued at $8,000 is really going to be the impetus to make this really work. And I applaud you and Lori for all the work that you've done.
Thanks.
Any other comments? We have a motion. Second, we have a motion with a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all so very much for the work that you're doing. Yay! It's okay, yay. Non-consent item number two, request approval of the renewal of the agreement with the city of Dunedin. Ms. Dr. Greggo?
Yes, this is a renewal. And it also demonstrates the many partnerships, especially in our athletic department. I'm going to call upon Al Bennett, who is the Director of Athletics, to just describe to the audience and to the board this agreement.
My pleasure. Madam Chair, School Board Members, Dr. Greggo. Pinellas County Schools have joint lease agreements with many of the municipalities in Pinellas County. These agreements allow us to share facilities with our community when needed. These agreements benefit Pinellas County Schools as well as our community organizations, which in many cases, serve our Pinellas County students. A good example of this agreement is one you have before you. The city of Dunedin and Pinellas County Schools, specifically Dunedin Highlands Middle School. The city of Dunedin needed additional space for their youth sports programs and other events, such as soccer, basketball, softball. Therefore, we entered into an agreement with the city of Dunedin. And they agreed to, this is fifteen years ago, to add lights, lighted courts, softball fields, and restroom facilities to the campus. In turn, we allowed them to use the complex free of charge after five o'clock on weekdays and then on weekends. And they use that for their youth soccer, for softball, and the public can use it. The flip side of that, to give you another example, we also have another agreement with the city of Dunedin where Dunedin baseball team can use the Blue Jays facilities for practices and games free of charge. So it benefits both. practices and games free of charge, so it benefits both. So, Dunedin did not have a baseball field, does not have a baseball field, so this agreement allows Dunedin baseball team to use a quality baseball facility for the practices and game. So you can see, these agreements are mutually beneficial to our schools and also to the communities.
Right.
I'll answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from any School Board members? All right, we'll have a, Ms. Lindtino? Okay. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item number three, request approval of the agreement with Directions for Mental Health.
Yes, Madam Chair, as part of our mental health agreement with the State Department of Education, this board approved our plan and was submitted to the Department of Education and approved, and I want to thank Donna Sicilian for her leadership of working with the State Department in doing so. This is one of the last strands of that agreement, and that is for the servicing of tier-three individuals, which are some of our most troubled youth in this community. So I might ask Donna to just review the process.
Sure.
And as you know, Board members, this was presented along with the agreement last Tuesday, but for the sake, let's review it for the public.
Good evening again, Madam Chairman, School Board Members, Dr. Grego and staff. I just wanna kind of remind and bring everyone, including the public, up to speed on the process so far. So, after the tragedy at Parkland at MSD High, there was a statute passed, Senate Bill 7026, that I know you all are very familiar with, and part of that statute included districts being required to submit and have approved a mental health plan, and there was allocations of funding that came along with that plan. And so, we did develop a plan. It's, to remind you, it's basically a three-pronged plan, which included training. So we have and continue to extensively train all of our district staff and our families and our community with regards to mental health and wellness. We also had a prong to increase students' access to mental health professionals in school, and we've done that. We have hired additional social workers, psychologists, counselors, and we're continuing to recruit for those as well, so the public knows that. And we included our threat assessments, which we went over at the last workshop, and changes in our threat assessment plan so that we are in alignment with Senate Bill 7026. And then the other prong, the third prong, is to partner with community providers to provide services, in particular, to some of our students that have some of the most intense needs. So, we submitted that plan to you, you approved it, we submitted that then to the state in August, it was August first, and they also approved the plan, and we have been working to implement the plan. As Dr. Grego mentioned, this is something that I had hoped would have happened a little sooner, but we wanted to go through a very clean process, and so we feel confident that the process we've gone through is, is very clean in terms of expressing what we see as our students' needs that are at the very highest, most intense level of tier-three services. And we looked at our providers in our community and outside our community to see who would best be served in, in these positions. So, we set out an RFP, and what we, what we had determined we would want would be a, sort of a day-long facility that students could be at. And we set out a request for proposal for that with the help of Linda Belkum, who is incredibly helpful, and you're all very, very fortunate to have her. She led me, I've never done that before, she led me through it very easily. We put out the RFP, we did not get any responses, not one. And so, we, I spoke with our community partners, many, most of whom I've had relationships with for a long time, and we asked what was the reason, and they talked about issues of liability and their insurance and having students on their property and so forth. We put out another RFP that modified it, that looked at services that would be for these students, but not necessarily in these agencies all day, each day. We received two. Neither of them, we went through the process of reviewing them, neither of them were viable options. And so then, we did reach out, there was one group of five of our local providers that teamed together and submitted a proposal on the second RFP, and because it didn't have some of the essential elements that were required, I did reach out in writing to each one of those partners and said, you know, what would you like, what do you see as your role, what do you have to offer? And we are working with them, each one of them. What you have before you tonight is the Directions for Living contract, which is one of those partners. We are looking at their providing very intensive services to these families. These are our students that we, through the threat assessment process, have enough concern about their being on our school property, so many of them are in tele-school, and the team at Directions for Living will all but move in with these families for the most part, really providing intensive in-home services. Also, when we can't get in the home, we're looking at alternative places for them to meet. So that is what you have before you tonight, and I'm, I'm very happy to answer any questions that you might have.
School Board Member Carr?
Hello. Thank you, and thank you for your hard work gathering this and developing the plan, which is found on our Department of Education Safe Schools site, along with all the other county plans.
Yes.
So, I recognize our need to provide services to these students who are most vulnerable, having myself been a school counselor when Columbine took place, having been a parent when Sandy Hook took place, and still having children in our classrooms every day as we worry about their safety. I certainly recognize the need for services. I have some concerns with the agency, and I'm assured that it's a thirty-day contract, so I'm assured by that fact and that I'm, the level of oversight provided by our district. I'm also a little concerned about the amount that we're spending with a single entity, but your explanation, and you also, of course, presented at workshop and answered a lot of my questions, and I appreciate your time with it. It is a large portion of the allocation, and it's not in line with the, in the specifics that were in the plan, the seven hundred thousand dollars allocated for a day treatment. It's actually a part, the partnership piece, so my concern is a single agency receiving the funds. And that, while we've, I, they, we've definitely improved our identification process, and I praise our Student Services Department for the implementation and our ability to identify threats and follow through with amazing oversight at the district level of these threat assessments, and it has resulted in an increased number of, you know, verified, founded cases that do result in a need for additional services, but I do have concerns with the agency, and while I recognize that we have to do something, I think it's important that we try and work to involve additional agencies and not just the single agency, and continue to work to follow through. So are we, do we, will we continue to do that?
Yes. That's your question, right? Are we? Okay.
I know it was long.
No, I didn't, I didn't mean it though, I just meant I wanted to make sure I answered what you're asking.
My preamble to it was important.
Yes, we, we are, we are continuing, we have always and we will. The contract amount is up to that amount because that was the allocated amount in the plan. Doesn't mean we will spend all of that. We will look at, each case will be referred through the district-level threat assessment team, so we just wanted to be upfront and say, this is the amount allocated, it could reach this amount, it could not reach that amount. It's not that we are giving this money and saying, okay, now you're gonna do the service. And it is a contract for more than thirty days, but there is a clause in the contract that says if at any time we don't feel the services are being provided or satisfactory, we can give thirty-day notice and terminate the contract. That's what, what that is. We, but to answer your question, yes, we have currently forty-two social and mental health agencies that student services contracts. I'm sure there are others in the district that contract with even more, but we continue to do that. We are continuing to look at these other providers that have, tomorrow, Dr. Grego and I are meeting with law enforcement about two other agencies, PEMS and SNCOS, that are looking to start a mobile crisis unit, and we're gonna be talking with them about that. So, it, just as an example of this, it really is a community effort. We have, we have so many kids and families with so many needs at so many different levels. And I will say too, that this program is based on a program that Directions for Living has with the Pinellas County Sheriff, that is very similar with a very high-risk population of students that are, have been determined to be at risk for abuse and neglect, and there's been a very successful program. And before we brought this to you, we vetted it with the sheriff and with the Child Investigation Division, and so there has been like a ninety-seven to ninety-eight percent success rate with that program, and that is what we are hoping for and looking for and will be monitoring for with this program as well.
I just wanna say, Dr. Carr, thank you for your comments regarding service delivery, and I, I know that we all want to be very conscientious when it comes to the dollars that we allocate for service provision. In my other life, I work in this specific, specific genre, and it can be very difficult, and we, we wanna keep in mind still that receiving mental health services still has a stigmatism attached to it, unfortunately, because if you're talking to your girlfriend or your neighbor about some problems you're having, you're seeking counseling, they're just not certified as licensed mental health clinicians or licensed clinical social workers. And so, the type of students that we're talking about have some real deep intrinsic issues and concerns, so it's not just wrapping our arms around that student, it's embracing that family and getting that family to want to take that journey with us for the betterment, without saying to them that they're not doing what they should be doing. It's a very delicate balance. There are a number of mental health facilities and organizations throughout Pinellas County, some nonprofits, some larger, some smaller. I've had an opportunity to work with Directions through Child Welfare Services and programs. I've served on the board for SNCOS Mental Health. I've served on the board with PEMS and been recognized by PEMS for my work in the mental health arena, so it's a very difficult, delicate balance. I am hopeful that, and I think we're trending in the right direction, when we're getting some of the students who are sharing, who they think may cause hurt, harm, and danger to themselves or others, so I think we're trending in the right direction there. And, you know, as the district always points out, you didn't say it tonight, but I'll say it, we were already moving in this direction before the state decided to implement 7026, and they implemented it really fast, and they put so much into one statute, and so we're trying to make sure we stay in tandem with that statute. But I do recognize your concerns, and I'm extremely grateful for the data point checks, because that will allow us to see where we are with those students and those families, and insert whatever corrective action we need to, or look at if changes need to be made within that, so those data points should help us. And I'm hopeful that maybe we'll get some updates as we move through, so that we can see also how it's going, where are we, how many students are we serving, any recidivism rate for those that may also be connected to the Department of Juvenile Justice, you know, things of that nature. I think that may help us, hopefully that will help us with some of those concerns that you have that are valid concerns.
Right, again, my concerns are predominantly with the agency and the service delivery of the agency of those individuals providing the direct service. So that, and their skillset and abilities, capacity to deliver appropriate services for those individuals with the greatest needs. While I know we've reached out to a number of different organizations and very few responded, and I appreciate their responding at all, to be willing to do the work, but do they in fact have the capacity to do it well?
School Board Member Bill Dudley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't think there's a person up here who doesn't appreciate all the efforts going into this, and, and we understand the ramifications of poor evaluations and so forth, and so, I know Sheriff Wauteri and all the experts that put together in that, in his group to investigate the Parkland and all that stuff. Every one of them has said that mental health is a very critical part of trying to make sure nothing like that happens again. Can we guarantee it? No, but we can do everything possible to make sure that it doesn't. You know, teachers, aside from doing their teaching and all those kinds of things, they're also pretty astute in recognizing kids with issues. And I would hope that by this, these programs that we're putting in, that we are going to be able to do a better job of identifying, don't let, try not to get kids to slip through the cracks. It is important, even though the importance of the results of the program, what's important also is accountability. Accountability, as we have a fiduciary responsibility to all the taxpayers and to all the public, as much as we want things to be good, we also, just throwing money at something without accountability is not, that's foolhardy. And I would think that the fact that we have a thirty-day clause in there that will help us kind of do some evaluating, I think that's good, and I would hope that, that this accountability will lead us to continue going and, 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 mental health is such a touchy subject, as you said, you know, people, when you say the word mental, all of a sudden, everybody, you know, freaks out, and we, we need to handle the situation with a lot of, well, with kid gloves, but understand that we're dealing with human beings and we need to, I, I'm sure, I'm kind of rambling, because I have a, I have a real passion for, for kids that, troubled kids, there's so many of them, oh my Lord, and go to, even when you go to these schools, these, these kids have problems that I never in a million years would ever, ever dream of, and whatever we can do, but we just, we have to be accountable financially as well as the results. And that's my concern, and I appreciate Dr. Carr bringing that up, and, and I, I think that, on the right track, and I think that, I think it'll work.
Yeah, thank you. I'm gonna support this item for a couple of reasons. One, we have been able to identify some of these students in the past, and all of us have said, you know, there are a handful that we have some concerns about and things that need, students that need more than what we can give them, and I think this helps us do that. And, and there is an escape clause if we find that it's not happening, but with the sheriff having a, a positive outcome with it and other agencies, I think this gives us one more piece. We have different agencies for different kinds of issues, but this is the one that will deal with those students that in the past, we have not had the ability to deal with them and to, to help them. And so, I will support this because I think it is that missing piece that we haven't had in the past.
Any comments?
Whoops. Yes, I, I have, yeah, myself. I've had a few comments, and I applaud you for the work that you've been doing, you've reached out to get other agencies to try to participate with what the work, good work that you're trying to do, and my experience has been with foster care and foster care children, there's a four-hour window, I understand, from There's a four-hour window, I understand, from when a child is removed from the home in, after midnight, in midnight, before midnight, after midnight, whatever. But I had a meeting with JWB and I was told that these children need to be in school. So anytime I'm up at Eckerd Connects or anytime I'm involved with Department of Children and Families, there's a disconnect there. And we're losing children and children are being subjected to terrible things. And we need to really be mindful that we get our children in a safe environment. And that safe environment means we need to find enough people that are in, in Pinellas County that can take a child and bring, and have that child in their home and have that child notice that everything's set for that child. They have a bed to sleep in, they have good food to have, they have good clothing. And that's a place where a child can feel safe and feel trusted and be, have trust in the adult family that's right at their fingertips. So there's a big disconnect in the Pinellas County system. And the people that are not stepping up, churchgoers, people maybe in a PTA, maybe people that are older in high school teachers or middle school teachers, we need to really reach out and really, really need to make an effort to gain people's trust and to gain people to step up to be a foster parent. Yes, there's a remuneration, there, there's money that we can pay these people, but we have to make sure that their house is all, you know, set to go. And we don't have enough families in Pinellas County. And when we bring these children into the Eckerd Connects, these children need to be in school. They need to be in school. They don't need to be doing flashcards with, you know, contractions, you know, or, or anything with a, what am I trying to say? You know, flashcards. We can't, we can't do flashcards. We can't do coloring books. We can't do puzzles. That's just keeping them there. We need to get them in school. And that's where the safe place is, that they're in school. That's where they trust their teacher. And if their teacher is not trustworthy, then we need to find them a different school. But that's a whole different can of worms. And, and I trust that you will do the right thing because many of our children have issues. And sometimes the issues are apparent and sometimes they are not apparent. There was a little boy I observed today in school, a third grader, and it was really heartbreaking, you know? It was heartbreaking. And, you know, what to do, what to do? He was writing his issue out and, and, you know, he just didn't know what to do. But I felt that that teacher wasn't engaging that child. The teacher wasn't getting him to be a part of the community that is in his classroom. So my hat's off to you. I certainly support this effort. And there weren't many reachbacks, you know, from you as you reached out, but we really need to have a sharp hand on the wheel and making sure that anytime there's a hiccup in the system, you can pull that thirty-day contract back.
Right. And just to remind you, I stand, I'm the one standing here, but there's a whole team of student service leadership and student services staff. So it's not one person, you know, monitoring and overseeing. It's, it's a, it's a very strong team, some of which came tonight to hear this because they are very concerned. And we, the whole goal of this, as you said, is to be able to have children back in schools, receiving their education, graduating, becoming contributing members of our community. And so I think that's the goal. Students bring different levels of concerns and issues to school and we're asked to address all of those levels, some of which we definitely need community partners that are willing to work with some of the more difficult to work with situations. And so we're grateful for all of our partners and appreciate just the opportunity to try to do this work with these kids and families that really need some intervention.
Ms. Ali? Yes, I just wanted to say that you're doing a wonderful job. You know, I've been out of the, my field for two years now, but I've worked with Directions for many, many years with my students, some of my students that are extremely at risk. They've done a wonderful job. And I know that Ms. Lot, the director, she's very passionate and I think that's very important, the drive. So I'm going to support this because I know these kids need the help. I took care of them, worked with this for how many years? So it's, it's in my heart and my soul. And I know that you've worked very hard to get the help back in Pinellas County that we, we've needed for a long time. So thank you.
Thank you.
And before we vote, I just want to also say, these are layered supports, so I want us to think about that as well.
Thank you.
We have the family support specialists. We have the supports that they receive when they're in school and then the staff that goes out to the home to kind of assess the situation based on what they visualize. We have, of course, the ability for them to go to a guidance council and things like that. This is an additional layer of support for those that have some more deep-seated intrinsic And I will tell you that the work is not easy. At Gulf Coast, we have licensed clinicians, psychologists, they are on staff. We have clients that come to the facility, but then we have staff that go out to the homes. In order for us to tackle the problem, I don't think we'd ever have enough bodies, if you will, for the types of concerns and problems that our students deal with today that we didn't deal with or we didn't have to deal with when we were in school. So this is not the only answer. It is a part of a puzzle to provide supports. And like I said, I really think those data points will let us know where we are, whether it would be Directions or any other agency. And I will, I will just say this, all nonprofit child welfare agencies, we all have issues and things that you can point out about us that persons would find somewhat concerning. Our retention rate is difficult. Our turnover rate is extremely high because of the nature of what we deal with. Providing compassion fatigue and vicarious trauma training to those staff so that they can be whole and come back and deal with the issues and concerns of families that have issues and concerns, I can tell you, it is tenuous at best. I, I am hopeful that we will move in a positive direction. I know that Dr. Carr has shared her concerns very clearly and I know that staff will continue to share with her so that she can feel comfortable or express her concerns if she does not feel comfortable as we move through the next couple of, couple of weeks to see how this goes. So I do appreciate you bringing your concerns forward. And I am hopeful, I, I know, I'm not going to say hopeful, I know that staff that we have here, as well as with your leadership, Donna, will, will do what's best for the student and their families, irrespective of agency.
Yes.
You know, we may know them, but if they're not doing what they need to do, then we have that strong conversation if need be, because that's why we're here. We're not here to, to softball things. We're here to make sure that they work the way that they're intended. So I do appreciate Dr. Carr's comments and concerns, everybody's comments and concerns because this is some, a place where we want to prevent anything from happening within our school district so that we don't have, hopefully, those sad concerns. So thank you all, everybody, for sharing. We do have a motion with a second.
I, I wanted to make one comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see you. I apologize.
As I've been up at Eckerd Connects, I'm just curious about, what do they pay social workers in that environment? Do you have any idea?
I do not know what they're charging salaries.
I can tell you what the starting is because we all, our, our paid salaries are set by the state because we're all funded through the Department of Children and Families.
Right, DCF.
Yeah, DCF. So you're starting out at thirty-seven thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Not enough.
That's where you start and then any benefits, but we have those guidelines.
Right.
Provided to organizations that provide child welfare services.
Right.
By the state of Florida. And then whatever your contract, so it's however you negotiate your contract. So if you negotiate some additional stipends, on-call pay.
Right.
You know, things of that nature, then they can earn additional. It's more taxing.
Right.
But I can tell you, that's where it starts.
But there was a woman in the, in Eckerd Connects one time and she said just a macaroni and cheese in a container and she didn't know what to do with it to either feed the child or feed herself. And that was very disturbing. The kid already had a McMuffin from the McDonald's and she ate that. But when she came back for a lunch break, because I was there from nine to twelve and I brought her back, the show, social worker or the whoever she was, the case manager, was like, well, do I give her this or is this my lunch? And then I just backed off because I didn't know what to do, you know? I wasn't going to take the food and give it to the child, you know, so, or take the, give it to the social worker or the case manager, you know? I was caught between a rock and a hard place. So, but those children really suffer in there. They really do. That's all I have to say.
These children that we're talking about, when you look at their history, the trauma and the things that they've experienced, you know, it, they're still children and they still need our help and we still have a hope for them to change their lives.
Thank you, everyone. We have a motion with a second.
Madam Chair, I, I don't believe we have a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Please forgive me. Do we have? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Do we have any opposed?
Nay.
Motion six, four, one opposed. Motion does carry.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kupersky.
You're welcome.
Moving on to our new business items introduced by Superintendent.
Madam Chair, non-consent number four.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That'll be Mr. Kupersky, so we'll call on him.
Number four. Yeah, it just kind of got me.
DMAC nomination.
The conversation was a good conversation. It kind of got me. Request approval of the school board appointments of, to the district for our DMAC. Dr. Grego?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll assume that wasn't a Freudian slip, but to introduce this item, as the board knows, the District Monitoring and Advisory Committee is the oversight committee that was created when the school board settled its desegregation lawsuit in the year 2000, the longstanding lawsuit that desegregated the school district like all of the others across the country. This committee is made up of six different organizations, each appointing two members. So there are twelve members total on DMAC. One of the organizations that appoints members is the school board itself. And so you have right now two members, Mr. Ron White, whom you appointed in 2016, but you also have Dr. Martin Shapiro, who is due to be reappointed. He has served on DMAC. He is currently serving as the chair of DMAC. And as you recall, in years past, we've had issues with obtaining a quorum at some meetings of DMAC. And so Mr. or Dr. Shapiro has attended religiously. And so we spoke about this at the workshop, but the item in front of you is to reappoint Dr. Martin Shapiro as one of the board appointees for DMAC.
There's a motion with a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And Dr. Shapiro has been doing a wonderful job. He's been there for a while and he's been steadfast and consistent. So thank you all for that. Moving on to new business items, this is items introduced by the superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair and school board. I too want to add my thanks to the mayor, Ms. Mayor Beavis, for allowing us to be here along with all of the staff and that have assisted us in preparation of making this a very hospitable visit. And so I wanted to say thank you to the city of Olsmar. Also want to say, and I know our two elementary principals were here, they needed to leave. You know, we have the all-county choral performance up at Ruth Eckerd, starts at seven. So, and I know Mr. Moss or Dr. Moss's wife and daughter were singing solo, so I told him he needed to get there and be there rather than stay here. But they've been here and they, also Karen Aspen, principal at Forest Lakes Elementary School. And as I mentioned, Principal Moss is principal at Olsmar Elementary School. So thank you to them and for, for not only being here, but really being the heart and soul of the elementary program here at, in, in Olsmar. The, this first time we're actually together in a board, public board meeting and say to the public, thank you for your participation and to the many Martin Luther King celebrations. I know we had one at Tarpon Springs in Clearwater and then the parade in St. Petersburg, all three parades. I know we divided and conquered and, but it was a great weekend celebrating Martin, Martin Luther King. So thank you to the board members, all of your contributions of time and effort. I know that you're growing the Tarpon Springs one. It's long and tremendous breakfast that morning and you and your daughter, you had to be proud of her leadership and what she provided to that, to that breakfast. I placed at your desk area the exciting news of thirty-seven elementary schools recognized by United States Department of Agriculture, healthier U.S. schools challenge. These schools will receive five hundred dollars for their nonprofit school account, their food account, and also a plaque for their schools. Our district, Pinellas County, schools continue to be recognized both at the state and national level in terms of our efforts of creating a healthy environment, not only in the nutritional areas, you know, but also in exercise. Last night was an exciting culmination of the Teacher of the Year Evening of Excellence, as we call it. Those of you who've been to several of the Evening of Excellence, you know, we've taken quite a turn this past evening, last night, because it was all about teachers. And I'll let you probably add your, your, your input to that, but I just want to thank you for your attendance. I was very pleased of the attendance there. And I think that the standing ovation, when the curtain opened and all of the hundred and thirty Teachers of the Year, the nominees, I think that spoke really what the whole evening was about. We could have stopped there, right? But, but we, but we didn't. And, and just the applause that continued on. Nicole Kengot is the Teacher of the Year that will represent Pinellas County and will prepare her application to the state level. As you heard last night, she's an elementary teacher at Plum Elementary School and she certainly, as many of the teachers there, had a support group there. And it was an energized audience. I loved it. I love the excitement in that audience. So thank you so much for, for that. I want to thank the foundation. They continue to listen and say, how can we improve this? You know, they, they made the Business Partnership of the Year award a separate breakfast. Some of you were able to attend and that freed up. And we said, let's take this jump where it's all about teachers in, in, in our school district. So thank you. Thank you to the foundation and Dr. Byer for that. I want to recognize St. Petersburg High School. I want to pick one thing sometimes to recognize in my comment. This is a historic event that I think sometimes we'll say it and then we'll move on. And, and that is that for the first time ever, the St. Petersburg High School, the IB program at a hundred percent pass rate in their IB diplomas, which is extremely rare. I've been with, associated with IB schools across this Tampa Bay area and it's extremely rare that a one hundred percent of the IB graduating class earned the IB diploma. It's an incredible feat and I just want to say thank you. We need to shine the light on that and many other accomplishments of that. The students go through a tremendous amount of work. Many of them graduate from the IB diploma with about thirty college/university credits along with them. And I, I constantly continually talk with parents of that. One as recently as Mayor Kreisman last night, whose daughter went through the St. Petersburg IB program. And I said, how's she doing at the University of Florida? And she says, you see, he constantly, he consistently says, says to me, high school is more difficult. And I don't know whether that, I should say that publicly to the University of Florida, but high school is more difficult and it's prepared, prepared her so well for the, for the courses at the University of Florida. So we'll take that as a, certainly as a, as a compliment. Kindergarten registration, I, I want to continue to say that, even though we had the open house for, for elementary schools, just to continue to remind the parents that kindergarten registration is now and all the way through to the beginning of the school year, but it's better to prepare certainly, certainly now. And as I mentioned, the all-county music choir concert is, is being held tonight at seven o'clock at Ruth Eckerd Hall. As you know, I, I say that as an infomercial, but also many of Ms. Reynolds' all-county all. As you know, I, I say that as an infomercial, but also many of Ms. Reynolds, all county orchestra is coming up at the Mahaffey. So take a look at your schedule. I can say to you that the performances are absolutely tremendous and a great evening out of musical talent, both either singing or, or music with the orchestra. And I know you'll enjoy it. So thank you so much. That concludes my comments.
Thank you. Items introduced by school board attorney?
No report. Thank you, ma'am.
No report. Items introduced by board members?
Might as well say something. Last night was excellent. The 2018-19 Teacher of the Year finalists, we had five, we had 10 people and Candace Reed was the fan favorite. Yay, right? It was very nice that she got acknowledged. And then on this pack of, on the back here, teacher nominees, we had many, many teacher nominees from very different schools. And I was sorry to see one of my teachers wasn't there, but anyway, I guess she had other things to do. But these teachers were outstanding. Every single one of them were outstanding. And Dr. Grego made some very kind comments about teachers and he, he, he really dug deep. He really dug deep to praise all the teachers that were in the, in the audience and gave many kudos to the teachers that were in the 10 finalists. So I think that was a very good, a very good nod from, from our superintendent, Dr. Grego. I still want to repeat that we still need foster families in our county. We have no beds. We have no beds in our county. And we need children to have a safe place to stay, to sleep, to have trust with their families and to, you know, assimilate and stay with the family. We need to have those children that feel safe with a family. We can't have these children being bounced around from house to house to house. Sometimes we take children and we put them in Pasco County, that there are no people that will take our child here in Pinellas County. So we have to really dig deep. We have to reach out to our religious groups and, and other organizations and see if we can get some people that would step up and, and be a part of this foster family concern. It, it's really heartbreaking when we go to, when I go up there, I, I don't know what else to say. But anyway, Bardwin Elementary School was another great opportunity we had. The ribbon cutting, it was great. I had to scurry off and go down to Happy Workers, but I did the ribbon cutting and High Point, the High Point Center, I think it was Woodlawn Center, right? Woodlawn, the, the school on 16th Street?
That's Woodlawn.
Beautiful. It was a beautiful school. I brought the little brochures for kindergarten to let them know what they're going to need when they have to go into first grade. The little children came walking in, you know? Parents signed them in and everybody sat quietly and they had their little snack. And then they went and had a nice tour of the building and it was good to see them go on, you know, to look at what kindergarten is and then look at first grade, second grade, third grade, fourth grade and fifth grade. So they have a vision to see what's going to be happening later on. The Martin Luther King Junior Parade was great. I walked down from the Tropicana Field and back up to Tropicana Field and it was very exhilarating and I was very enthused about walking. And a lot of people said they saw me. I was, I was, I was walking. People would say, yeah, I saw you. Why you been out there? You know? So it was good fun. It was a good way to start the week. And I think that's about all I have to say. Oh, yeah, that was Woodlawn Elementary. Wasn't that Woodlawn, the school, the kindergarten? On 16th Street? Okay. And many other interesting things throughout the week. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Dudley?
I'm so used to being not second. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple items. One is, I'd like to mention that on last weekend, Friday and Saturday, Northeast High School had Honors Weekend. And for those of you who aren't familiar with that, it's, it's our way of, the highest award that we can give any student athlete in high school that a school can do is to put them in a Hall of Fame. And we have one at Northeast High School. And on Friday, we had a social get together and then on Saturday, we had the induction ceremony, at which time we inducted six new members. And just, I'll throw their names out there. You may or may not know them. If you do, you can say hello and congratulations. Skip Cutting, who used to be a deputy sheriff and he was actually the head of the school board, the school police force for a short time, several years ago. Jordan Rainovich, Nick Mina, Angela Thomas, Russell Tyson and Mark Wizewati, who is currently a teacher. He was, talk about a dedicated teacher. He was a teacher and retired, went through the drop program and all like that and started subbing and they asked him to come back and he's now back teaching full time. Loves kids and he's doing, and he was a terrific athlete at Northeast. So anyway, that's, that's my little pat on the back to those guys and gals and they were, it was, it was a terrific evening. This Friday night, you know, last week, our last board meeting, I mentioned about people going and supporting our athletes and the kids in productions and plays and musicals and like that, you know, it, these kids put their heart and soul into those things. And there's one coming up this Friday night and this again happens to be at Northeast and it's the Miss Northeast High Pageant. And what's significant about this is it's the 27th, 28th year, I'm maybe off a year or so, but the young ladies, there's 10 of them vying for that post. And the winner, the, the top five in that will be the representative for the Junior Sun Goddess. That's our Northeast selects their students to go. And so it starts at 6:30. It's a wonderful night, these kids, the talent that they do, it's, it's, it's very, very refreshing. But I'd sure like to see more than 100 or 150 people in the audience, you know? Need to come and support them. It's at, at the auditorium on the corner of 54th Avenue and 16th Street, starts at 6:30. And it's real cheap to get in. I think it's five bucks to get in and you'll have a great night. And I, I, again, please support our athletic teams and our plays and all of our extracurricular. These kids put their hearts and soul into it. The least we can do is show them that we care. And again, you're going to hear this reoccurring theme from me because it's very important. You know, these kids, they, they just love you to be there. And so, anyway, that is it and I'm done.
Yes, I just want, I see a lot of young adults in the audience. Our Martin Luther King Foundation Tarpon Springs is not just about Martin Luther King Day. We are working all year to bring young people and the community together with the schools. It's about joining, celebrating our differences, bringing all of us together. Our young group, there were only two this year. Palm Harbor High really helped, but they're graduating. And I need some young people to step up and start working with us. So if you're compelled to be part of your community, to join schools in the community, please call the school board office. I will come and meet with you and get you involved. We do all kinds of activities during the year. We're growing. We're making a difference in North Pinellas County. And I'm extremely proud of the, the involvement of our young people. It starts with you. So think about it, you know, those of you that are in high school, you need your Bright Future volunteering. This will qualify, so give me a call. Thank you.
School board member Carol.
Board members, you're aware that I represent the board on the Hispanic Achievement Committee. And I just want to kind of keep you abreast of what's going on and update you a little bit. As you also know, our Hispanic graduation rate went up by 14% this year. We've closed the gap between the state average and Pinellas County. And that is something of which we should all be very proud. But, but it didn't happen alone. And at our last meeting, there were all kinds of programs and, and community partners that had come together. We have University of Central Florida. We have St. Pete College represented. We have the Hispanic Outreach. We have people promoting VPK in the Hispanic communities. We also have, I don't remember the name of it, the Hispanic Outreach at, at High Point, they're part of this committee as well, as well as the principals. And they're really looking at a holistic approach to how do we get not only our students involved and help them, whether it's learn a language or navigate our system, it's also getting the parents involved and reaching into the, the community and with the families. So there are all kinds of wonderful things going on with that. Raymond James came to the meeting yesterday and they're looking at some possible internships, but they're also looking at having students come and just see what goes on. Look at all of the opportunities in the finance world and just kind of expose them to things that might just light that fire under them as, as far as they're moving forward. So if you want to know more about it, I can get you more information or you can talk to Natasha, but there are some really good things going on with our Hispanic students. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. And I also am looking around the room and seeing a number of folks here tonight. And thank you for coming out tonight to, to be a part of the school board meeting this evening. So often we hear about how we need to teach civics to our students. And while we do teach civics, I think more apt, or what exactly folks are looking to say is we need that civic engagement piece. And seeing folks engaged, hopefully tonight, maybe we'll hear from you later, that is really exciting. And I appreciate when folks are coming and speaking or emailing us or sending us postcard campaigns or whatever issues and concerns that you have, that you're bringing them forward because that's why you elected us, is to listen. So I really appreciate that and I hope our young people will continue to be engaged both through their Students' Rights and Responsibilities organizations, their multicultural clubs within the school, their student government. So there's a lot of opportunities and I do appreciate those of you who are here tonight when we have the opportunity to listen to you later.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you so much to the city of Osmar for allowing us to be here this evening. I had the great pleasure of visiting Osmar Elementary School this afternoon and getting a nice tour of their beautiful facility. They, the community has stepped up in so many amazing and wonderful ways to support Osmar Elementary, providing them with all sorts of technology and additional equipment needed for the students. And they could not be happier or express more gratitude to the city for being so supportive, not only the city, but also parents, the PTA and the community surrounding that school has been absolutely phenomenal. I had a couple of things, I just wanted to update. During the workshop, we were presented with the Summer Career Acceleration Program, which is a new launched program to connect students with internships over the summer. I had spoken in the meeting that I would like to be a part of that and I'm happy to say that today, the Palm Harbor Chamber of Congress, as well as the Pinellas County Housing Finance Authority, reached out to Pinellas County Schools and are hoping to offer access to over 350 small and large local businesses. So I'm, I believe the goal was to create 250 partnerships. I think we're going to be on our way to being able to accomplish the goal. Secondly, over last week, I had the great honor of taking my students from my academy to a festival in Atlanta, the Junior Theater Festival, and was honored and very humbled to receive the International Freddie Gershwin Community Leadership Award. But what is very exciting about this award is I'll be able to travel to New York and work with leading theater teachers in the nation and throughout the world, as well as Freddie Gershwin himself, who is the owner of Music Theater International, and be introduced to many educational programs for teachers and for students that can help us further our arts programs throughout the county. So I'm very excited to be able to do that this summer and hopefully bring back a lot of professional development opportunities for our teachers as well. And I think that was everything else. Thank you.
Well, congratulations, Ms. Keane. I didn't know you got that award. Yes, please let us know because we want to celebrate with you and celebrate you and that's, that's you. So congratulations. So my voice is going, going, gone. Just real quick, again, thank you so much to the mayor, I believe he's already left, and to the vice mayor and the other council members and the community for allowing us to have our first meeting outside of the Pinellas County School Board Administration Building. You have opened up your arms to us. You've made us feel so welcome. I heard a couple of the board members just make that comment. It was just warm and welcoming to come here. So thank you all so very much. For staff, I know this was a lot and I know you all probably got sick of hearing me ask, 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 but I think this really showed tonight that coming out into the community helps us connect better and have that conversation and dialogue. So thank you to everyone who made this happen. Thank you to my colleagues for supporting. The MLK Day of Service Breakfast in St. Petersburg was phenomenal. Over 1,000 people got a chance to hear an amazing speaker, the Reverend Dr. Haynes III, who spoke for 35 to 45 minutes with no notes and was on point every step of the way. And his message, sometimes when we get speakers, they just come and they speak on a topic. His topic was really about Dr. Keane and what would he do if he were here today and were faced with some of the things that we're faced with. So thank you to those who came and shared in the table with me. I appreciate it. I also want to thank the district for the school book bus that came and was there on Saturday at the National Council of Negro Women's House. We had a literacy day as our MLK Day project. And I've shared some of the pictures on Facebook. Y'all know me, social media girl. But I wanted you all to see, and I shared a picture with Dr. Grego. I wanted you all to see the number of families that came out. When you make services available to the community and you share with them that they're available, they will come and take advantage of those services. Mothers were coming with their babies in their strollers, getting books that they could read. It was just a family oriented day. So thank you once again for that book bus. I mean, it's getting its weight, weight worth in gold for it. The last thing I want to say, okay, so for the Saints or the Rams, people, I'm not talking about that, because I know it was a call that will go up in infamy. But what I want to say is Dante Fowler, who graduated from Lakewood High School, played football at Lakewood High School. He was originally recruited by the Jaguars, Jacksonville Jaguars, was traded because of the cap to the Rams. He is going to the Super Bowl. So one of our very own will be on that field in Atlanta in all of that cold, playing for his first Super Bowl. So I just want to give a shout out because Pinellas County Schools not only graduates for academia, but we have others who go on to make other choices and they exceed and do well. It's all about college, career and life with us. So I just wanted to give those few notes and I had a wonderful time this evening. I really did. Well, I gotta, I gotta cheer for Dante Fowler, so I'm gonna be on that one. Okay. So review of board requests. Any requests? No requests recorded. Normally we have our school board meeting, deltas, highs and lows. Do y'all mind if we pass on that tonight? Pass on that this evening? But if you do have any comments or recommendations for anything we could have done differently or, or whatnot, please let Dr. Grego know and we can, we can take that out. Okay? At this time, I will adjourn our school board meeting and then we will go over for any additional public comments. And again, thank you all for coming. Thank you to the city of Osmar. We appreciate you having us. Meeting is adjourned. Board members and Dr. Grego, we have 10 speakers this evening under general public comments. Our first two are Brant Robinson and Divya Aurora.
Good evening, Dr. Grego. Madam Chair, members of the board and staff. Also want to welcome our three new board members, and I hope you guys are giving them a light round of applause back there. I teach at Dunedin High School, Social Studies, and I do want to allude to the fact that I just finished grading 91 tests and unfortunately 16 of my sophomores spelled opera, Oprah. But moment of silence. I'm actually here though because I am, I am speaking on behalf of the Human and Civil Rights Committee for the Pinellas Classroom Teacher Association. My wife Carol and I are the co-chairs of that committee. And as you guys know, and I want to also update some of our new board members, we have been working for the last year and a half on the restorative practice initiative. And I can't tell you how promising and how much it represents where our district is and the potential for our district, that we are working so closely with the district. Since this past summer, our little six-person committee, I've mentioned that all of us have become certified licensed trainers for restorative practice. In fact, my wife and one of our other colleagues is going to be doing a training tomorrow night and the next night. We have a full slate of trainings this semester. And this Thursday, we're sitting down as we do every month. Our little committee also meets with Pat Wright, Bob Pothe and members of Pinellas County Schools. That's very significant. I say all this because as we go into the second half of what is essentially like our implementation year, there are some issues and some concerns I think we need to be aware of. Last Tuesday, we, we spoke to a group called FAST, as you know. We were actually asked by FAST, which is Faith in Action for Strength and Togetherness, an interdenominational religious organization. They've been working on restorative practice for the last three years. They've done a lot of research. They've gone out of their way to look up information about how this has played out in districts like Louisville that are comparable to ours. But they share some concerns that I hope we can make sure that we're committing to by the end of the year, which is we want the district, we hope the district will put out a survey by the end of this year. A survey of all the faculty, because as you know, all faculty are supposed to be trained by the end of this year. And we're hoping that the survey will reflect how people are thinking and feeling, the kind of support they've been given, the kind of support they need, and also the potential to really create restorative campuses where the administration and the principals are also using restorative practices in the way they deal with faculty and staff. And I just want to point out that we're really excited and we're looking forward to our meeting a couple nights from now. And again, we've committed that we'll meet with you guys once a month and give you an update on, on where we stand. So I really appreciate you taking the time. Thanks very much.
My name is Divya Aurora, and I am currently a junior at Palm Harbor University High School in the IB program. We are here today because we would like to propose a public speaking program for middle school students. Currently, public, public middle schools throughout the county lack public speaking programs, and we are here with a solution to that issue. We call it Break the Silence. Break the Silence is a program dedicated to preparing students with the necessary presentation skills, the courage to overcoming freezing on stage, and the strategies to connect with others. We have implemented the program into Dunedin Middle School, and we have seen great success. We also got a school-wide public speaking competition approved at the middle school, and it will be taking place in April. For this reason, we would like to talk to you about implementing this program throughout Pinellas County middle schools. If you take a look at that handout, it outlines a district plan for implementation with three options. Additionally, we have a plan in place for a district-wide public speaking competition for middle school students. This is a great opportunity for students to express themselves and speak about something they are passionate about. In the binder present with the board is our Break the Silence Curriculum Guide, which outlines our entire process of implementation, including how we approached Dunedin Middle School. Additionally, the binder contains all the workshops that we have been running for the past six months. We strive to teach students through activity-based learning instead of lectures, as we believe hands-on activities allow them to better grasp concepts and put practices into real-life scenarios. We hope the Break the Silence Curriculum Guide can be a helpful resource in bringing the program to middle schools. Now that I have told you what we hope to achieve today, my partner will tell you why this program will benefit students in the long run.
Good evening, Pinellas County School Board. My name is Rungam Trivedi, and I'm also currently a junior in the IB program at Palm Harbor University High School. The club we have created at Dunedin Highland Middle School has shown to improve the kids' experience of public speaking in classroom settings. The activities that we planned have been beneficial to the kids, with one of the club members saying that it quote unquote helps with impromptu presentations in the classroom. It is estimated that as much as 75% of the US population struggles with a fear of public speaking to a certain degree. This means that some about 238 million people in the United States feel nervous about presenting in some scenarios. The middle school education system for Pinellas County lacks any sort of competition or program devoted for public speaking in classroom setting. And this lack of teaching for public speaking means that students are not well-prepared to succeed in life. A new survey by the TED Talk company reveals that 80% of all people who succeed in life, meaning that they're considered to have an above-average income, agree that one of the key skills necessary to go far in their career field is a good presentation speaking skill. Children learn the best habits at a young age, and so when middle schoolers develop good public speaking habits, this will stay with them for the rest of their lives. And the competition me and my partner plan drives students to want to speak amongst large audience members. And because, because of the competition, they also have a motivation to compete because they have something to win. Many teachers in the gifted program that me and my partner were alumnis of give presentations on their own time outside the curriculum to improve these skills. But in the general education system, this is not the same case. If a countywide competition for the public speaking program is created, then adolescents will strive to learn more about ways to improve their speaking skills and also learn about the importance of tips. Our activities in the program designed for English classes in Pinellas Middle Schools start out with, start out with interesting activities that involve a combination of creative skills and off-the-cuff style speaking. Many of the kids in our current after-school club have shown improvement in confidence skills and their presentation skills. A study from the Live Strong shows that, a study from Live Strong shows that a lack of confidence with children leads to problems in later life, such as a lack of drive in their careers or their home life problems. The number one phobia in the world is glossophobia, more commonly known as stage fright. And 30%, 37% of children in the United States have experienced this fear at least once. This is because they have not been well-prepared in the area of speaking to larger audiences. And this is, this is a problem especially present in Pinellas County Schools. Dunedin Highland Middle School has already agreed to a school-wide competition for their school, which will occur in April. And the principal feels as though that the countywide version of this would also be a great addition to the current Pinellas education system. We hope you take this program into consideration and our proposal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Bring it to base.
Our next two speakers are Mark Clutho and Suzanne Seen.
Mark Clutho Largo, you're a great big crew of people from Energy Star. A joke. He started out saying conservation. When the word is efficiency, how many years do I have to repeat myself? I brought that book from the Nuclear Regulatory Commission that had the definitions telling you the difference between efficiency and conservation. Two different things. But you just won't quit. And you have those imaging specular reflectors going to the ceiling. And you make the stupid dumb buildings over and over again. So what happens? Melting of the Greenland's ice is accelerating toward tipping point, study says. Greenland's enormous ice sheet is melting at such an accelerating rate that it may have reached a tipping point and could become a major factor in sea level rise around the world within two decades, scientists said in a study published on Monday. The Arctic is warming at twice the average rate of the rest of the planet. And new research adds to the evidence that the ice loss in Greenland, which lies mainly above the Arctic Circle, is speeding up as the warming increases. This is not pretty. And again, that word that you people just can't seem to grasp is correlation. What did Winston Churchill say? In Time Magazine, September 12, 1960? We shape our buildings thereafter, they shape us. Well, it's not going to be pretty. And as I said, that Energy Star, it's a joke. The buildings are a farce. Look at that Largo High School. A monument to ignorance. It is a crime. It is malfeasance.
Next speaker, please. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I am a mother of two children who both attend Pinellas County Schools. And I'm here to express my concern surrounding the early start times of Pinellas County High School. I've spoken to countless parents of high school children, and they have shared with me that their children come home and collapse on the couch for hours after school. They're not productive, they're exhausted. My daughter will be entering high school next year, and I have serious concerns about her and her fellow students. I have concerns about their health and their well-being. In addition to just being a teenager, my daughter also has an autoimmune disorder called Crohn's disease. One of the most difficult symptoms to manage with this disease is severe fatigue. She is also more susceptible to serious flare-ups of her disease when not getting adequate sleep. If a child is crashing on the couch for hours after school and they are healthy, imagine how hard, how hard it is for a child like mine. Four years ago, the American Academy of Pediatrics issued a policy statement recommending middle and high schools delay the start of class to 8:30 a.m. or later, saying that doing so will align school schedules to the biological sleep rhythms of adolescents, whose sleep-wake cycles begin to shift up to two hours later at the start of puberty. The scientific data to back up an 8:30 or later start time is extensive and also supported by many other organizations, such as the CDC and the American Medical Association. Sleep deprivation not only impacts learning, but also increases risks of accidents and injuries and affects hormones and metabolism. Changing to later school start times has been shown to reduce car accidents involving adolescent drivers. There is also clinical evidence that sleep deprivation is a contributing factor to obesity, depressive illness, and sleep disorders. In addition, the data from school districts that have changed to an earlier start time is very positive, many noting better test scores and less absences. According to the Education Commission of the states, research from a variety of fields on different stages of adolescence consistently shows the positive effects of later starts. Recently, economists looking at existing school data where start times were changed for administrative reasons found similar positive improvements. Research found clear test gains in middle school students when they had later start times, and the positive effect in eighth grade scores remained two years later in 10th grade. Please put this topic on your next meeting agenda, read the research, work with stakeholders, and make this a priority. Maya Angelou said, "Do the best you can until you know better. Then, when you know better, do better." Making this change may not be popular with some teachers, administrators, transportation officials, or other stakeholders who have established schedules and routines. Please do better and consider this. Thank you.
I'd like to make one comment. Could you bring the data that affects Pinellas County Schools?
Yeah, just Pinellas County Schools, how the data affects what we do in Pinellas County. That would be much of- Have you guys done a study?
Well, you should have brought the data to us. And that's all I'm saying.
Okay.
Right?
Okay. Next speaker, please.
Our next two speakers are Stephanie Dawson and Jacob Merritt.
Hi, I am Stephanie Dawson. I am a mother of a third grader, but I'm here to talk about the high school start times. I, I, I think I will start by addressing your question. If the CDC and the American Pediatric Foundation have said that later start times are good for children, I think Pinellas County's children fall into that data. And what I came here to talk about was basically to say that I think you are intelligent people, and I think that you've seen the studies. So I can quote study after study. I can make statistics go whichever direction that you want. I can make up some stats and get some backing, and I'll send them to you. But that's not what's important. What's important is what's good for our kids. And I think that parents are stepping up more and more and saying, "This is good for our kids." You saw it before with the recess moms. I was one of those. Sadly, that had to go to legislature. I reached out to the person who at that time was sitting in one of these seats. They're not there anymore. That, I did not get a good response from them, so Chris Latvila and I became very good friends. And it went to legislature in that past. And I think that's what's going to have to happen if you guys don't take it seriously. And I don't think that's what should happen. I think it should be done here. And I think Pinellas County has a good record of doing incredible things for our kids. And I love our school system. And I think that this is now yours to start studying and finding out the information that you need. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Jacob Merritt. I'm the Performing Arts Department Chair at Lakewood High School and the Director of the Strings of Sparta Guitar Ensemble, who just got invited to perform in England for the World Youth Guitar Festival. And while I wish that's what I was here to talk about, it's not. Here to talk about the construction and the auditorium at Lakewood and some of the issues that we have. First issue is the overall quality of the work. A lot of the stuff that's going on in there is just not up to par. And even though the communication between myself and the administration and the construction crew has been great and they've answered all of our questions, some of the answers are, "The architect didn't design it that way, so you can't have it." Or someone from the district said that "We can't have flooring across the entire stage." So there are sections of the stage that are just bare concrete and are going to stay that way. And no solution has been presented to us or we haven't been told anything like that. And I passed everything through Ms. Savage. She said, "Please don't be mad at her. She didn't do anything wrong." But I passed everything through her and everything went to Mr. Pothe and Mr. Reynolds and Mr. Herbeck. And we haven't heard anything back about what the results are going to be and how to fix some of these things, like shoddy incomplete paint jobs that we have going on, uneven baseboards, they're different all around the auditorium, and the warped flooring that they put in on the stage, it's already warping after a few weeks. But the bigger issue is the scope of the project and its apparent non-compliance with the Facilities Design and Construction Handbook guidelines. Although I'm no expert on these documents, the design criteria does specify several things that were not included in this project, such as a new countertop and cash drawer in the ticket booth, two new water fountains in the lobby, a full sound and light trap at all entrances, and also a full LED stage lighting system like the one that was installed at Seminole High School. The fairness of the fact that Seminole got one and Lakewood has not is a separate issue, but it was announced that Lakewood would receive updated lighting, and all we got was some new fluorescent lights that, some of which don't even work with the light system that we have currently. So we get strobe lights in the back of the auditorium, which is super fun. The stage lighting that we have was installed, I don't know, the, the company's out of business, so we can't really find out. And everybody says, all the stakeholders that have come in say it looks exactly the same as it did 20, 30, 40 years ago. And there's also raised electrical boxes, which are a big hazard on the stage. And we asked them to lower them, and they said they weren't allowed to do that, per the district officials. I think- I think several people told them they weren't allowed to do that. So, that means that we're still, have the worst auditorium in the district and that's really unfortunate. And from a purely aesthetic point of view, you step from 2019 back to 1964, when you go from the brand-new renovated lobby into the bathrooms that haven't been touched since 1964. And we asked if we could paint them and we were told, "No, we can't paint them. Somebody has to come and do that." And that lobby, by the way, has sprung three leaks since the beginning of this calendar year already. So, even though the work is being done and it hasn't been completed yet, I invite you all to just come down and take a look at some point.
Thank you. I have been at the school, uh, Mr. Herbig? Oh, there you go. Mr. Herbig, if you don't mind, if you could maybe follow up and then just kind of give us a report on where things are with all of that, please. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next two speakers are Todd Hoover and Jay King.
Ladies and gentlemen, on behalf of these two families back here, I filed a lawsuit with the Circuit Court against Pinellas County School Board two days ago. There's a notice of action and a request for waiver of service that should have, Mr. Kupersky should have received today or you'll receive it tomorrow. So, the action is moving forward. There was some incidents that happened at Eastlake High School. Hazing, bullying, harassment. And we went through the whole process by letting the school board know. Give a notice. Six months has passed and there's been nothing done. There's been no action. And the boys here asked me, "What does that mean?" Coaches are still there. Nothing's been done. And it means that the Pinellas County School Board thinks Jay and Judah are lying. There's no other way to look at it. If there was no action taken for the allegations, that means that you think the boys are lying. And when I explained that to them, they, of course, said, "We're willing to stand up in a court of law," which we're planning on doing, raising their right hands and swearing by it. In addition, they wanted to come and tell you face-to-face.
Good evening. My name is Jay King. I'm currently attending JW Mitchell High School. I'm an eleventh-grade student. I asked Mr. Hoover to come here to protect my name. Mr. Hoover made me read every word and made me review my complaint. All allegations made about the Eastlake baseball team is true. I'm not a liar. Everything I said is true. Hazing and sexual harassment and bullying have dedicated throughout the baseball year at Eastlake High School.
Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Judah Norwood.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Judah Norwood and I attend HB Plant High in Tampa, Florida. And due to me transferring to Eastlake after the 2018 school year was due to me getting hazed and negligence during me playing on the baseball team. And all my compliments that I put in my article is true. And that's it.
I have no more speakers this evening, Madam Chair.
Thank you all so very much for coming. I appreciate you all being here for the follow-ups. Oh, he's already stepped out. Uh, Mr. Herbig has already stepped out. Okay, so he'll get that back with us. Again, thank you all so very much for coming. I appreciate it. I just want to make one correction if I can. Pinellas County implemented recess prior to the state requiring that recess be implemented. So, I want to correct that for the record. The second thing is, is that while we understand everyone may not agree with start times and things of that nature, a survey went out, extensive dialogue and communication, a team was put together to talk about the start times. Some of the times were moved back. Some of our bus routes were changed to try to accommodate the things that were shared with us. And we agreed that we would look at that data after a period of time and that was for the start of this school year. This school year is not yet over. So, I don't want anyone thinking, who may be here or looking at it, that we have not addressed those concerns, that we are not looking into those or following up. We have. So, I just wanted to correct those two things for the record so that while the media is here, they can also have that portion as well. Those of you that are here and those of you that are at home. Again, thank you so very much. On behalf of myself and my colleagues and administration, we thank you for coming out and spending the time. More importantly, we thank you for what you have invested in our children. Good night.